Please join in the pledge.
In the midst of the fire of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'll call the meeting to order. Everyone had a chance to review the consent agenda.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, I'll say it.
By Shay, by Jorgensen to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. All right, first up on the agenda, Doug Reed, disaster, discussion on disaster recovery response. Where are we at today, Doug?
About to embark in a boatload of paperwork is what I'm afraid of. These are for you. We're gonna count it.
Okay.
We're gonna count it.
That's, okay, that's what I was asking.
Until, until they say this is the close date on this incident period, we just need to track it. There's been so much going on that there's no doubt that budgets are impacted, right, so. And we don't need to start off the new year continuing to run, run, run like that, so, so we should take advantage of while we have access as much as we can. So really, there's, there's three fronts, there's the original from April twenty-sixth, there's the, the flash flooding and severe weather events from May twenty-first through the end of the month of May. And then the one that we're going after right now, which surely will have enough, just probably in secondary roads, costs and repairs and debris removal alone to hit our threshold for the Missouri River flood and continuing. So it's, you know, like I alluded to last week, it's, it, it's gonna be a little bit tricky keeping everything set and not, you know, just having our ducks in a row, so what this, what this will do is give county departments and, and the other jurisdictions as well an opportunity to say, we've been impacted by these, we know a lot of them have been, but just to officially say, we're in, we're going down this road, we're tracking our stuff like we've talked about. And then these direct links to these trackers just kind of help define it. But these are something attainable, reachable for all of you, you'll get a separate email as well with access this portal, so you can keep an eye on what departments are putting in or submitting and those kinds of things. And we'll go through that process, right? And, and some of it, or some of the departments that have had impacts all the way back to April is gonna mean, you know, the, the pain of maybe cutting and pasting and, you know, redoing something that they've done. But at the end of the day, when the state and FEMA bring people in to start actually working projects, getting them in, if we use, if we use these tools that, that have been developed in partnership with them, then it'll go much smoother at the end of the day, hopefully, and keep everything separate. Because it's easy to, you know, one of the things that we'll see with FEMA is, okay, well, you've got damages to this road, but when did it get damaged? Did it get damaged here? Are you claiming in on both? How are you claiming it on here if it was damaged there? What is it new? Is it, is it just a bunch of fun red tape stuff that we need to navigate? So hopefully, this'll kind of help separate that and get it down the right path. So that, that will go out later this afternoon, so they have an opportunity to at least look at it and then discuss it at the department head meeting tomorrow afternoon, answer any questions that they might have and move on from there outside of current activities. I have, County Roads has opened up a lot of the roads as of last night up in the northwest part of the county. So I've got my folks going up there to start damage assessments on the Missouri River flooding. We were looking at maybe partnering with some other folks potentially helping out with that, but the new state damage assessment system is rolled out in the middle of all of this stuff. And so we're, we're using that, we want to be familiar with it before, before we get other people using that system. As far as public damages from the flood, County Roads, I know, has already started to submit stuff using the older system, which is fine, that's not a problem. But, but then, then administratively, they'll, they'll put it on these trackers like they have in previous events.
What do we do with the levees? Do you look at those? Do, does your department, what?
There's, there's nothing for me to determine by looking at them, other than there should be dirt there and there's not dirt there. Right? So that's, that's the extent of my expertise, they're all using the same engineer now. He's been out and about, let the engineer do his work because he's got a relationship with state homeland security anyway.
Okay.
We've got one particular project officer that I'm comfortable with and that I trust that will be working this county for all of these disasters. And he's also the state's primary drainage district person that, that will be here. So he'll, he'll likely be doing some work out of my office. And so we'll, we'll be able to wrangle that in because reports from the trustees are, are far and few between. And I've had a chat with the engineer that they're using to, to help keep us in the loop so we can include their stuff as we go through this process, right? So like it's mentioned in here, I think on page two for you, kind of the status of everything. For the tornado stuff, obviously, we have individual assistance already approved and FEMA working this week. They are at the Lakin campus again, and then they go to a couple other counties for a couple weeks, and then they return to Minden on the twenty-ninth, and they'll be there through August third again. I also have a meeting with FEMA today at eleven-thirty, we're going to discuss maybe putting a, a fixed site in play in this county now that we're gonna roll the flood into it. Because likely, I, I mean, there's a chance that we get individual assistance for that disaster as well, depending on what we see in the assessments. Because we've mitigated a lot up in the, the most impacted area, there's obviously less properties up there now. So that kind of limits chances of us getting an individual assistance declaration just because of the exposure and thresholds that are required. But we've already got the declaration for a lot of the counties up north that, that received flooding before it all came down to us. So our threshold is a little bit lighter, just because we would be an add-on county, a contiguous type of scenario. So, so there's a chance of that, too. So we're, we're trying to plot out, we can keep the mobile operation going between the, the different counties, but in, with the flood going to a joint preliminary damage assessment now for individual and public assistance, it might be a good idea to just have a fixed site somewhere in the county to cover everything from April on through that's eligible, and that we can keep them here instead of having a week or a two-week break coming back and forth all the time.
Are they getting many people coming?
Um, in the, in our daily operations brief, as we're getting information from FEMA on the numbers of people registering and money that's being approved, it's in that one table in there. I, I don't have the number off the top of my head right now. They are seeing people come in, or they wouldn't be coming back.
Okay.
You know, or, or they'd at least be putting pressure on me to say, we're done. And I'm not ready to do that, especially with the, the flood happening. So we may be looking, we will be discussing this afternoon, trying to find a fixed site. One of the places that, that I, I may want to consider is potentially one of the conference rooms downstairs here in this facility. If you all are good with it, I, we need to look at a couple places to set up a disaster recovery center on more of a permanent basis.
And you're saying where?
Uh, one of the conference centers downstairs here in the courthouse.
Or a group, I guess.
Potentially. We'll, we'll probably look at something like the, the, the library, but I want to find a couple of alternate spots, too.
How long would you run that, Doug?
Until people quit coming, to be honest with you, right?
I think it's important.
Until you tell us to get out.
Convenient, you know?
Yeah, it is, you know, people come here for business, you know, it's, it's a known location, you know, much like, much like the library, which we've used before and had in Hopper, so we'll probably look at both if that's, if that's amicable and see what works best for FEMA and the gear they gotta set up and this kind of thing, but.
Doug, does your agency take a look at general overall weather patterns as to why we're experiencing all of this weather this year? I mean, for instance, down south, they, they have a hurricane tracker that is determining this is gonna be a, a very active year for hurricanes. I mean, the weather we're getting, is it, is it a general, some type of a weather pattern, a jet stream going across, you know, whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah, do you guys take a look at that? I mean, are we?
Yeah, yeah, you know, the, the weather service and the climatology folks, they, you know, they, they have their seasonal updates and those kind of things, and, and, you know, you can kind of.
We just headed from, yet this summer, we're headed for more storms, more rain?
Well, I imagine here before long, my hope is, and, and some of the trends right now, the way it looks, is we'll be coming into a little bit drier and warmer of a pattern, much like we do every year this time of year, kind of a thing. You know, we, we know we were on tap for, you know, a, a wetter spring and early summer season, which means with the different weather patterns, that convective weather or severe weather is more probable, you know? So it's no surprise that we've seen activity, it is quite a surprise we've seen so much activity. But, you, you know, it's kind of one of those things. As far as, you know, other long-term patterns and visions of what's to come, you know, we, we can have some offline discussions about what I think, but not ready for.
It seems like, it seems like Missouri River is getting to the point where it's, it's every year, every other year anymore. I, I don't remember.
Different discussion.
Yeah, yeah, we, you know, we've, we've had, we've had the most recent big ones in eleven, in nineteen, now twenty-four. We've had some small ones in between, you know, that, that didn't impact a whole lot, some low land areas kind of a deal. But it's, uh, it's not like, you know, in the last five years or something, it's just gone crazy or anything like that. But it's, you know, and everybody tries to throw the tags on about a hundred-year flood, five-hundred-year flood and all that. And it really doesn't have anything to do with where the water goes. Has, they really base that more on what the cubic feet per second flow is. And so, you know, I think even like in nineteen, it technically would have been classified more as a fifty-year flood than anything else at the end of the day. But, you, you know, you, everybody's got their own opinions about that. If that's the case, then they probably need to redo their time scale, but it's just my opinion.
Last week, you had a meeting out to Oakland for the agricultural.
Yes.
Was it well-attended or?
I, I, they have not reported any numbers back on that, but I don't anticipate that there was probably, but maybe a few at best, would be my guess. At the time, just when they opened up and discussing with one of the, the, the federal officers out there, I think that they had seen like eighteen families at the ag centers, and that was between three counties total. So over three events, they were like maybe eighteen, eighteen families that, that had come in and either been signed up for something or, or done whatever, but that's, you know, a, a total of eighteen families between three operations in Polk County, Union County, and our county. But again, we, we wanted to give it one, one more shot, just because of how, how quick the first one came about. So they, they haven't reported those numbers yet.
Jason, do you see any problems with setting up a DR site downstairs?
No. So we'll work with it.
I'll give a hold of it, be kind of like I did last time. See if I'm a little bit, but we'll, we'll know more about that after the meeting this afternoon. We'll be meeting with some of them, some folks at the, the Minden City Council meeting this evening to get them onboard a community-specific recovery coordinator and community planner that there's funding available for, for that, that community to move forward with their things and a lot of good things. Another email that you should look for is I'll be sending you some information on a new state program that we're trying to get off the ground, hopefully within the next week, to deal with some potential immediate, more immediate, at least with this recent disaster, or intermediate-level housing needs from stuff starting in April all the way through, but, but also not just our county statewide. That can provide some different housing options for people that need it until they have their long-term plans set or in motion. Everything that I will be sending you is in draft form and not ready for prime time yet. So it's for your reference only, the state has asked that it be kept with local officials at this time because there's, there's some moving parts and some funding things that have to happen. And they just don't want to get their, their head, their head above their, in front of their skis yet. But I want you to know about it because it, it will apply to more than just the Minden tornado, but also the folks that might have some ongoing issues up in the Crescent area with housing. But also, any of our folks who have been impacted by this most recent flood will be able to take advantage of it, too. So I just want you to have information upfront, that way you know about it. Because once they approve it and say it, you know, the press release is gonna come out of the governor's office, and that could be anytime, whenever they dot their i's and cross their t's. So just give you a little forward warning on that. Outside of that, I don't have anything else on the top of my head unless you have any questions.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I've got a couple.
Yes.
You mentioned that space downstairs, how much room do you need?
Uh, it, it depends on what FEMA wants to throw at it, right? If, they've run these things with twenty people to two people before. So it just depends on kind of what their vision is.
We didn't ask for twenty.
No, I know that, I know that. But I would imagine, based on, you, you know, the numbers that, that we're kind of seeing at each site, it's not like we, we've got a hundred people coming in every day for a solid week. So if, if they can set one up with, you know, an SBA rep and a, and maybe a couple FEMA specialists, then, then a smaller conference room might be adequate. If not, and they don't think it's enough space, then, then they've already done a previous inspection at the library. We'll just have to clear the schedule. I just like this because it's, you know, it's not any closer than the other one, but it's still a known location, but it's a lot easier to deal with the scheduling of our rooms than asking the library to cancel some public events or education things and, and those kind of deals, so.
Somebody who may have that burrowed room reserved already, might, if it is, we'd wanna notify them to go somewhere else.
Yep. That's fine.
The last question, Doug, you mentioned, I think, that you're not aware of any blowouts in any of the levees up north.
Oh, no, 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 even at the last meeting, I said that, that we know that we do have some. So there was, there was at least one on the north leg of the, the Honey Creek levee, kind of in the area, I believe, of the old private levee, what they used to call the old Frost levee. There, of course, was kind of a blowout that wasn't really a blowout with an old scoured-out, uncovered pulver pipe in the Vanman levee that caused some issues and let water free flow into the dry side of that levee. We know we've got some significant scouring and one area of blowout on the south leg of the Honey Creek levee. And then we believe that there's maybe one or two spots somewhere on the Pigeon Creek levee. I just haven't seen any pictures of that before, and none of, I, I haven't heard any reports from those trustees directly. But we do have some. And then we've got others, other areas of scouring. I think there's an area, I, I think maybe that one up by the Frost wasn't necessarily a complete blowout, but it, it, it scoured away the, the width of the levee down to fifty percent of its original size. So, you know, it's gonna have to be beefed up and compacted a little bit, reseeded, all that good stuff.
Any other questions for Doug?
Um, we got three different events, and I think payroll and claims will need three different line items. Is there a way to make those the communication between roads and sheriff and whenever they put the claim in? So that makes sure we get it on the right line item?
Uh, yeah, it, 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 it all depends on how your folks set it up or determine they need to be able to set it up to track everything per event.
So if they get the codes in, they'd have to let everybody know, make sure they get it on the right project code.
Yep. I, or I'm gonna try and, you know, if they do, I, it would be better for auditing purposes on the backend and grant processing and money in, money out kind of stuff, if we could start utilizing the disaster numbers in those codes.
Uh, yeah.
Certainly gonna be trying to push the communities and city and county department heads to refer to their disasters by these numbers, just to keep it straight.
That'd be the forty-seven, that'd be the forty-seven seventy-nine or?
Yeah, yeah, and they don't have to use all those things, they can simply use the, the, you know.
Those four.
Yeah, they can just say FEMA forty-seven seventy-nine, and, and then everybody will know what it is.
Do the cities have their own disaster code numbers then?
No, no, this is, this is, these are statewide numbers when they're issued. So anybody that's had an impact, say, from the flooding that started, like, so you'll notice on the forty-seven ninety-six, it's just, the incident name is just June sixteenth and continuing right now. So that'll cover like everything from north, northwest Iowa, all the way down through our incident, even though we might just be calling it the Missouri River flooding, there's, there's more to it statewide. But those are universal statewide numbers.
So for all the communities, it's one, one group?
Yep, it'll all be the same.
And you'll contact David to get on the agenda for the department head meeting?
Already done.
Okay, great. So you don't need any action from the board today?
I, I don't believe so. I think that we'll probably be coming up on the timeframe of the declaration expiring on its own. And, and I would imagine, unless anything crazy happens this next week, that we can probably just let that thing loose. Response stuff is pretty well down, declarations are being requested, or we're already, you know, we're working on getting scheduled for the Missouri River stuff, but we need to use some, some local damage assessment first. This has just been the first day we've been able to get out on some of the roads, so. Let's see, we get out there and not get a vehicle stuck somewhere.
Thanks for coming in.
Yep.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Next, we have Sheriff Andy Brown and Chief Deputy Steve Wenchel. We've invited you to the boardroom today to answer some questions on the specialty pay that you've got set up for your deputies. And I appreciate you guys taking the time to come in and providing all of the information you have provided prior to the meeting. So now I'll turn it over to the board to ask their questions.
Andy, how many sworn deputies do you have?
I think currently we have fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven?
Yes.
And twenty-nine of them are in specialty pay.
Correct.
Well, that's not very many. I mean, I, I didn't think you had that many. When, how, how many? How many trainings does one of these deputies attend or required to attend before their quote "special" in that particular area?
It depends on which specialty division that they're in.
Emergency response team. I know it's, I know it's been out three times since, that I can remember.
The training for, the ERT?
I'm sorry, the incidents, but the training for.
Yeah, they do monthly training, plus they're required to do a basic SWAT school, which is a week-long. And then also, they always, every other year, rotate to do an advanced SWAT that's also long off, off base course, so.
Do we, do we keep track how many times each one of these specialties is called out for a, a response?
Like, is it a special? Officially, no?
Should we?
It's in the call log, if, if we, if you need to know how many times we T.I.'d in an accident, we could go get that, but we don't keep an Excel spreadsheet.
No, I'm talking like, you know, I can give you three really quick examples. What I believe is our emergency response team, when we had that incident on Indian Hills Road in Combsville.
Yes.
We had an incident, a person in a vehicle on, I believe it was six-eighty.
Eight-eighty, yep.
Eight-eighty. And then we had an individual in a house, I believe it was in Oakland.
How many years ago, the one in Oakland? Probably five years ago, give or take? Yeah, I promise, I mean, yeah. I'm, I'm the ERT commander, I don't know if you know that or not, so. I guess I understand your question, like, how many call-outs have we had in total?
Yeah, like, how often do, how often are they, is the situ, does the situation require that?
Probably, I would say, some years we'll have one activation, some years we'll do seven or eight activations. It's cyclical, it all depends.
The bomb squad, how many times have I been called up? Do you, are you, do you know?
Probably anywhere from two to six times a year.
Really?
On average. Probably more than that, because they, they go to the city, it's a, it's a shared unit with Council Bluffs PD. So we have two, and they have two. And they train three times a month. The federal regulations for the EOD team is high.
Is that why we only have two?
Right, one of the reasons for that. It's significant training, it's six weeks, you leave, go to Alabama for six weeks, and you can't come home. Our ERT team probably needs to train two or three times a month, but physically, most smaller agencies can't, can't do that. So we do it once a month.
Does Council Bluffs go with the sheriffs on calls in our territory?
Correct.
Okay.
If you look at the emergency response team, maybe I'm, maybe I misspoke. On those incidents I just talked to you about, is that the crisis negotiation team that went on that? Or was that the emergency response team?
I don't always take the crisis negotiators, it depends on the situation. It's like the standoff in Oakland, of course, they're there, I think they were called out for the one on eight-eighty for sure because there's potential that we would have to negotiate. There's no way we could actually predict how many call-outs are a year, like I said, you said before, there's, could be one, there could be seven, eights. I think one year I was on ERT, we had almost a dozen in one year, it's just one, one of those years where people weren't acting right, so it's just, just depends, it's just the nature of the beast, I guess.
If, if a person's, if a person's job is investigations, are they paid more than a rope or blood on the road or something like that?
A corporal on the road, I'm not, no, probably not. Maybe, Janet, do you know? I mean, there's, because a corporal on the road would get more than an investigator, but.
I think the easiest way to answer that is.
Base pay is the same, but we move into investigations, they fall under specialty base, so they get that percent amount of. The base pay would be the same as a regular deputy.
I would agree with that.
Yep.
So our investigator, I don't want to pick on anybody, but we have, we have a sergeant in investigations, that's all he does, right? That's his job. So does that require specialty pay then, if that's his job?
That's what the union and the board agreed to back in twenty-nineteen. So they were called out this last week, and we had investigators called out on a death over the last weekend. So they get called out in the, of this group, investigators, investigation probably gets called out more than anybody on this list. Nine to weekends.
Should there be a, should there be a limit in these categories?
I don't think so, it depends as needed. I assume that question. I assume that question would come up. I would like to add another crisis negotiator today. I currently have three.
Do your school resource officers get specialty pay?
Well, because they weren't around when this was created. I mean, but we haven't, haven't talked about it, but fortunately right now, both of our. School resource officers are already getting it anyway from E R T and. Yeah, that's but it can't end, no, not can't end, but. Yeah, school resource was not a thing when it was originally negotiated, so this, this whole thing was well before Sheriff Brown, as you guys know. So, um, school resource officers, I, I think one of the, the determinations was folks that are subject to call out twenty four hours. Three, seven days a week, three sixty five, s- school resource wouldn't beat that, so. We have about, I, I did the math, we have about twenty two, twenty two different areas where we have people trained. In a different certification. Driving instructors, chemical munition instructors, defensive tactic instructors, CPR, our F T Os, our fire investigators. Our O W I uh instructors, our uh peer support folks, um, it's a lot. Again, we're, we got a lot going on in Sheriff's Office.
And like you said, this was all set up before Sheriff Brown, so if Sheriff Brown could change it today, what would it look like?
More.
We have eighteen emergency response team members, I mean.
Sixteen.
I just counted them. I, I come up with eighteen. And we count again. I mean, this, quite possibly I'm wrong.
If I can make it work for the money, I would add probably two to four more emergency response team members, but. Very expensive to outfit our folks with that, the equipment that we require.
I, I have eighteen. So if, if you needed. I needed.
Fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, but either way.
I'm looking at the list that you provided.
Yeah, and I did print that same day, so. But anyways.
Well, it's, it's an email, it's, it's, it's an email from you that's got this on there.
Right.
Okay.
You guys need to share sheets? I'm gonna see why these two numbers.
Janet, is there a percentage?
Because they're investigations.
Oh, okay, okay.
The two names are investigators now, they were hidden.
Oh, so I have.
Double paid.
I have an early email.
A lot of them paid, but they were in two categories. I cleaned the categories up on my end, just so it's easier to read.
Okay.
So we got sixteen instead?
We have sixteen E R T team members. The two that he has lived in two different columns, I just changed the columns, but.
Okay, because we all got the same sheet.
Total number doesn't matter.
Okay.
So you, you don't think there should be a limit on the number of the, of people you put in these categories?
It's on our needs. What we, do we anticipate adding any to these columns? Sheriff and I talked this morning. The only number I would like to add is one more crisis negotiator. But for me to say, or the sheriff to say, in the future, if we have somebody who's a younger deputy who hasn't had the opportunity to go to. T I school, I promise you our traffic investigators would love to add one or two plus up. So they're not getting called out at two o'clock in the morning on fatal car accidents. They would like to share that workload. Uh, T I's take about forty to eighty hours of work on the backside of one, because of all the computer stuff. So if they could share that workload, we would gladly add people to it, but. Right now, we don't, we don't anticipate adding to any of these six categories, but for us to say. We would love to cap it, we would not love to cap it, uh, but as of right now, I would only like to add one more. In the next twelve months, I don't see us adding, I don't see us adding anymore in the next twelve months.
Do we have enough people on board to, when someone does go to schooling for six weeks? Are you severely cut back in personnel?
Depends on who puts in for it and where they come from, because there's shifts in the road that are short now. We've got a couple people on lay duty, we got a couple more comp injuries. You know, it's just. I mean, it just, it just depends. I mean, like, they could do one of those things where they pick a school, program school setup for a crisis negotiator, let's say somebody. Perhaps puts in for it or, you know, from civil and then all of a sudden we're kind of short that division, it just, it just depends, so it's. A lot of work requires, when things like this. Most of these schools are only a week long, Brian. Only one would be our E O D and we're not, uh, we do have one guy going to E O D school. But other than that, we don't, we won't be adding anybody to the E O D team.
Okay.
What, what, what was that, what's that acronym mean?
E O D bomb explosive device.
I mean?
The bomb team.
Oh.
Explosive ordinance division, sorry. It's easier to say bomb team, but E O D is what they like to be referred to as. But most of these schools are one to two, uh, T I's multiple weeks of school, but they're offset throughout the calendar year, so.
Okay.
And that's just on the initial training. They're not week and two week long schools for their research and that kind of thing.
Guess that's very good for our team. That extra training.
Well, we had four come on since twenty twenty one and none came on, so that, that was part of this. The reason to bring you in and find out, but what are we doing with it? And we just, why are we adding people? Do we need them all?
You know.
That kind of thing.
The world's crazier, isn't it?
And then it depends on who comes on too. I thought, or, I am not, I'm not doubting you, I just foresee him kind of high, I don't remember adding four people to specialty pay. Unless they're already on it from another thing. Did we add four new specialty positions?
Actually, seven were added, but three came off. And I don't have the names, I just have the number.
Yeah. Look, looking at these names, the, because he, he and I actually talked about this this morning. The only one that I can see that we've added in the last two years. That would be new would be, uh, we added a, uh, one T I. And the only thing I might say, is I don't know who the names are, is people may be added to a category. But they were already getting it because they were already getting it in another location. So like, we may have, we had an E R T team member who became a traffic investigator, so he may have been added to the T I column, but he was already getting it for E R T. If that makes sense.
And we don't double that.
We, no, they don't double it.
Okay, alright, alright.
Yeah, the ones that are on multiple specially pays are still just getting the one.
Just the one.
Set rate, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I, when you say seven, I, I don't know who that would be, because a lot of these folks have been on these teams for multiple years. Well, there's only one name on this list that's been a new uh traffic investigator, so.
I don't have that with me, but I'll get that if you want to know. It doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It, it really doesn't matter, not to me. I just was looking at um totals.
Yeah. And this one position that Steve wants to add for crisis negotiation could already be on the list and it wouldn't affect anything essentially, so. But that's just, you never know where they come from.
I, I appreciate you guys coming here and expressing what you need to be effective. At law enforcement agency in the county, and you guys are very effective. I like hearing from you. I like to hear what you need, because that's what I take back with me. Uh, you know, of course, we're all constrained by budgets as, as most government agencies are, but uh. You guys know our situation and uh, you know, again, I'm all for whatever you would need, I would certainly be willing to take a look. At what you guys need to be effective.
I can bring a bigger list if you want me to.
Just as long as Crescent Speed Control.
You know, believe me, I looked at it, you know, if all of these categories are, are there to serve the public and protect them, so. Uh, we did, I did a, a figure on, can't remember the person I picked, oh, I do, I do remember who it was. And uh, I put that uh one point five percent on his salary. And it equaled about twelve hundred and fifty bucks a year for that particular deputy. Or that, I mean, that's, it's not a money thing, because, I mean, if it saves one life. Worth a hell of a lot more than that, but that's not starting negotiations, right? I'm just telling you, I'm not complaining about the money, I just want to know why we have so many and. We've added some, none have fallen off, and I think that was part of the conversation.
I'm just curious, say, the K nine unit, uh, is that, are, are those dogs used a lot or?
There, we have one on duty every day, so.
Wonder if it's a million dollar dog, isn't it?
Two of those four names would be K nine, because we wouldn't really have, we would have only had one K nine.
Yeah, one of them is.
On the initial, that would be the initial. So two of those four names you brought up that were added, two of those would have been our K nine. Now that I'm thinking about it, they would not have been on the original agreement between you guys.
I only see one on here.
Second page, yeah.
Oh, right, oh, okay, okay, I see, alright.
Well, aren't two of the, on the E R T team?
Yeah. So they have two K nine teams right now?
We have three K nines, but the two that we added were already getting it from E R Ts. That's why I say I think some of your numbers may be added columns, but they were already getting it. Elsewhere.
That very well could be, because I didn't have this list.
Sure.
And I didn't know what everybody was, what teams they were on.
I think you're those names, Steve, if you're curious.
No, I'm, I'm good, I just.
Seems to me that would be a, 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 an area where we would need more, as, as. Council Bluffs and Potawatomi grows, we would need more uh of those types of resources, not less.
True, but it's. Fiscal and logistic a nightmare, that's.
Andy, do you know how many Council Bluffs has, K nine?
Uh, they have five, don't they?
Four or five, I'm not a hundred percent.
Okay.
So, and that's a resource we share, so, you know, if our guys are on a training or if they're off duty or whatever, Council Bluffs is great for, but State Patrol will bring a dog. So.
Yeah, I, I like.
A lot of this is shared resources as well.
Yeah, I like the, I like the shared aspect of it, thank you.
Yeah, we've done well with, you know, many fences and building bridges essentially with Council Bluffs, State Patrol, even Omaha Metro, I mean, we've done pretty well in the last few years. Sharing resources and part of the, you know. The E R T team and Rook and stuff like that has helped Nebraska agencies recently too, so it's, it's been good, so.
That was my next question, last question was, which one of these groups run that machine?
So we have, what, four or five operators running for the, which one of the columns? Generally, your D O T runs in our, only in our E R T column.
But not all of these guys, all these people run it?
No, physically running it?
Yes.
There's four of us.
Are you still one of them?
I am.
It's still today?
Yeah, we have four guys that are certified to run it, I'm one of them. Chances of me getting in actually physically operating it are close to zero. But in the event, uh, I have to go, uh, Bellevue called a few weeks ago for a situation and. Um, I had three guys on vacation and I would have been en route, so I probably would have driven it, uh, if they needed us and they ended up calling us off, we didn't take it, so.
Is that mutual aid or do they pay for that?
Mutual aid, just like we do with the Omaha's helicopter. They don't bill us for the helicopter and we use that thing multiple times a month. That would get very expensive if, if people started sending bills to each other. And we would.
We don't want to.
We would lose out on that, by the way.
Because you talk to Sioux City, Woodbury County, they don't have a very good relationship and they. They are like this all the time, they bill each other for their.
Mutual aid, it's, it's not, it's not good, it's not good practice, so we just kind of, I mean, for, well, for instance, you know, we were over at uh that. Guy that shot at the Nebraska Patrol, he barricaded himself in the semis up in that, you know, um, outbuilding. We were there, we were paying for their wages and our fuel for the Rook, but then all the damage that we essentially did, they will pay for it, it's, it's. We're not gonna bill somebody for the hours and diesel that we burn in the, in the Rook, so I mean, it's just better to keep a good relationship than start sending bills, because like I said, the helicopter is very expensive to use it. Sometimes multiple days a week, so.
In that situation you just mentioned, Andy, I, I remember that. What uh? Who has control of that situation when our, when our guys and our equipment's over there?
So essentially, I mean, we can say what we're going to do with it, they can't make us do it. Uh, but then we just kind of let them kind of run their show, saying like, what do you want us to do? If we're not comfortable doing something, um, then we won't, so.
So when, when uh the um, when the damage occurred? Was that directed by?
The Nebraska Patrol Commander of those area.
We wouldn't do that without that.
Correct, yeah. And as a matter of fact, with Steve being there, it was kind of starting to get a little sticky, um. Because he wasn't really resisting, but he was, um, so as we were doing damage to the vehicle. He was getting uncomfortable because the guy wasn't really doing a whole lot, so we actually called our guy up and said, okay, your team needs to start doing something now, we've done what we could. So it's, you know, I go with it, we go to the incident command, so. Uh, they ask for the resource, we take the resource, they say, can you guys do this for us? Yep, we're, we'll do it in that. If they ask us to do something that. Uh, if we're not okay with, we would just simply tell them no. And, and we talk about that, I have a meeting in uh two days with the metro area. We all get, all the SWAT commanders get together quarterly, we all meet and talk about incidences and how we worked them and resource sharing and all that, so. We've used Omaha's Bearcat, we, we've used their armor on calls over here in the years past, so we have a great working relationship with Omaha and the surrounding teams uh on the Nebraska side, so. Uh, good, it's a good, it's a good resource sharing, so not everybody's having to buy all the same equipment, it doesn't make any sense for the taxpayer on either side of the river.
And each incident is ultimately a training experience anyway.
Yeah, we debrief them all and what went well, what went bad, you know, we do all that.
Any other questions?
I do not have any.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, guys. I really appreciate that. Hey, how's the building company?
We have uh concrete.
Well, they had that, it was up there a couple of weeks ago, looked at it.
So unless we have orange cones for our sidewalls, all we have is concrete, so. Pull the forms down, that's the last progression we've had, so.
Your work done on the roads on the flood event?
Is our work done? Um, not necessarily, unless somebody still, I mean, for some reason this morning I came to work, there was an over road semi driving on Mud Hall, I don't know where he came from.
Okay, but we're not, we're not monitoring any roads, we're not doing anything.
We only did about four days of overtime. We pulled our, we pulled our guys off that Friday of the initial week, that's all we did for. Uh, additional extra patrol, we just had area cars spending time up there.
Is, were those hours documented and provided for? Thanks for your time.
Hopefully we have nowhere natural, that's what we got, I don't want any more.
Okay. Thanks for coming in, guys, really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Keeping us safe. Next, we have Jason Slack, Director, Buildings and Grounds, Discussion and or Decision to Review Application for Use of Potawatomi County Grounds. For Jimmy's Hot Dogs and Jay's Coffee and Donuts. So we've been doing this for, this is our thirty day review to kind of see what the feedback is and.
Yep, uh, I haven't, we haven't had any issues with anybody, so um, if we wanna. The board chooses to extend that, um, we would be fine with it.
I think people like it. They really do, I've heard, that's what I've heard.
He was set up out on the street over there.
Yeah, I think he wanted some shade.
That's what he wanted.
And that, and that's fine with, you know, with me, I don't, you know, if you want to set up in the shade, let me do it.
You're right, and I think the storm came in one day, it seems like.
Yeah, the last time he was here, he got rained on, so.
A bit of soggy bunch. Hey, did uh. Has anybody else requested?
Not yet, no. No, we, we actually would have to go after somebody and then, you know, and ask them if they'd be interested. Um, and we haven't uh really invested any time in that lately, so.
So your recommendation, Jason, is to give them another thirty days?
Yes.
We're just gonna do thirty days at a time, or?
Uh, that's up to the board.
You know, we ought to do the rest of the season.
Yeah, I'd just say, there's no complaints, people, people are enjoying, you know, what's there, I, I would say, why not let it run?
And if it ain't working for them, they'll leave, right?
No, yes, yeah, and that's what I told Jim too, I said, if, you know, if you feel you're not making any money here. Um, you don't owe me an explanation, you know, just let us know you're not gonna be here anymore and, you know, we'll go.
If someone else wanted to come, would it just be a different day, is that what we'd accommodate?
Yep.
Alright.
So we got plenty of days left, so, yeah. And then I guess if we had more than, you know, days, more people than days, then we would have to make a decision there, so. I don't think we're gonna get there this year.
Okay. All right. Personally, I don't have any problem with being there. Like, my feeling is.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either.
So we need, take some action here.
I would make a motion to approve the rest of the season for these guys.
I'll second that.
What's the end date, Brian?
Pardon?
What's the end date?
They're, they're pretty just with liability insurance, right?
Yes.
I mean, October and November, they're still some nice days. November first, okay. You okay with that, Jeff?
Yep.
All right, so we got a motion by Shane, a second by Jorgensen. Is there additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Right, next we have Jason Slack, Director, Buildings and Grounds, and Scott Reals. Reals Engineering Discussion and/or Decision to Contract with Reeves Engineering Company to Engineer Annex Parking Lot. And did I say that right? How do you?
Ralphs.
Ralphs, all right. Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Those are two Es?
Yeah.
Okay.
Scott, Scott came on recommendation from the, uh, Jeff Brankle out there at the Ski Hills. He had done some engineering for some of the projects that we've done out there. Um, and they've been more than satisfied. I reached out to Scott to see if we could get a, get a price to engineer a parking lot there where the annex building says.
You showed us kind of a preliminary map one day.
Yep, and it should be in your packet.
Pretty much what we're gonna go with.
Yep.
So, Scott.
Scott.
Yep.
Uh, you, you were formerly at H G M, right?
Yeah, let's see, I lived countless my whole life or just outside of countless. I, uh, worked at H G M, started out of college in nineteen ninety-five and basically been doing engineering in this area for twenty-nine years, so. But four or five years ago, I retired from there and, and I have my own business.
Okay.
I do, if you have smaller engineering projects.
Has the, has the city seen this, that?
I have not reviewed anything with them yet, no.
Right.
We haven't hired, nobody's, we haven't hired anybody to do anything.
No, right. That'd be the first step is going and talking to their engineering guys and seeing if they have any issues.
So this may come back as something a little different then?
It's possible.
Okay.
Storm sewer would be the biggest, how we're handling drainage would be the biggest issue that I would see. I don't, I don't know why they would be, have any issues with anything else.
I agree.
Scott, what kind of, uh, what kind of insurance comes with being an engineer?
Let's see, I've got a, a large, I'm helping, uh, Platts Smith to do their hundred million dollar wastewater treatment plant, so I've got huge, I got, I got five million dollars of insurance. Um, I got lots of insurance.
What kind, what, I mean, what?
Uh, professional liability, uh, business insurance, auto insurance, um, could get you all the details if you wanted.
Is that something that a government entity should, uh, require?
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
You would be able to provide that?
Yes, I have also, uh, umbrella.
Okay. Uh, Jason, is, is that, uh, is that your recommendation?
It is.
To move forward with Ralphs Engineering?
Yep.
Lump some amount of, um, seventeen thousand three hundred?
Yes.
I'll move that for you, Susan.
I'll second that.
You're the one that's gonna design the parking lot, is that correct?
Yep.
I have some issues with our current parking lot, because I drive a, uh, full-size pickup.
Okay.
There are spaces out there, in my opinion anyway, just are not conducive to.
Yeah.
Full-size parking.
Yeah, I see on this plan, uh, the spaces are labeled at ten foot. A, a, a normal ballparking lot is nine foot by eighteen. So if we do ten foot, that gives every space another foot.
Okay, well, whatever you can do to help, I'd appreciate that.
I mean, it's, it's just a balance of, you lose a few spots by making a bigger.
About the width or the length?
Both.
Well, well, I, I, I drive a, a, a crew camp.
Good truck, yeah. So how long is it, is it?
We're not gonna let you park over here.
No, I think with ten foot.
Well, I'm just saying, I know other people that had the same trouble I have, because they drive, you know,
Right.
Some similar vehicles to that, to what I have, so.
It's just a balance of, or you try to maximize spaces or get a little more comfortable spaces. You know, you, you could always trade your truck in for a Renault. Some of these spots.
And, um, I guess I could. You know, I, it's the only thing I can fit in anyway. I'm, you know, I'm a big guy and I, I don't, I don't fit in bitted vehicles.
So, Scott, does your contract include any oversight during the actual construction?
Um, it, it doesn't. I, I really don't know that there is much need for that, um. I mean, I, I can, uh, it just depends on what you want. If, you know, sometimes cities want full-time inspection. Sometimes it's a weekly meeting, uh, with the contractor. Um, so I, I usually negotiate that after, uh, the contractor selected. And a lot of times it depends on the contractor. If you get a really good contractor, you don't need to be watching them all the time. Um, so it's kinda hard for me to price up.
Part is part will be for Jason to decide who gets to park there.
Yeah.
Closest slot, who gets the furthest away slot.
Melvin can decide.
Susan, I, I know where you're going with that. There's no construction really going on here. We're just laying concrete down on the ground, but.
Exactly, but.
I mean, I would, of course, be available for some questions or things, but if, if you want a more formal, you know, weekly meetings and.
Is this a parking space, Tim, is this a parking space that would be, you know, really, uh, regulated by arms up and down too? I mean, no.
The board hasn't discussed that yet, John.
So this is, this is for employees?
Employees, I hope.
As of right now, we don't have any lighting figured in for the parking lot. We don't, we don't have any electrical figured in for that lot. Um, kinda hoping that we can add some lighting to some of the Mid-American poles that are in that area to provide the lighting, which will tack on like twenty dollars to our bill a month. It would be more economical that way, if we could do that.
Do we need to do any, uh, soil testing, Scott, then you think?
Yeah, I have to talk to Jason about what, what the demolition is involving, you know, what they're doing with that, um. It's a parking lot. I, I mean, if, if they compact it and, and don't bury the rubble, I mean, it should be okay. It's not like you're, you're building a building on it.
Right.
I, I don't think you need to.
Do we have compaction tests on the?
I was planning on.
When they take it down?
I was planning on doing a geo study once they get the building down. That way we have that report.
I mean, if you want to, as a factor of safety, it's always good.
Good.
Be good to have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, we're not burying anything there.
Right, no.
We're just, I mean, that's not.
Hell, we might find dead bodies from the jail, from the old jail. Who knows?
Yeah.
But, but we really, for, for a parking lot project, we won't need to do much underground. I mean, just.
Right, but what's under there, if, if it has to be tore out ever?
Yeah.
You know, to be serviced, I don't know what's.
It's probably not a bad idea to do a boring or two and.
Well, just as a reminder, the old parking lot, we found the footings from the old courthouse, remember?
Yeah, and they, and they, they'll find cisterns too, you know, in the area from the old houses and stuff that sit.
We don't know all that happened there.
We found a bunch of stuff down, when they did the V A building, there was a bunch. There were some old houses down there where cisterns.
Yeah.
And, uh, rubble.
Well, hopefully we can get a few for nine-one-one, a few of those parking spots.
My, my concern is about the drainage, and you mentioned that you would design all of that, and I would just wanna make sure that it's poured to spec so that there isn't puddling and.
Yep. Yep, I'll have to coordinate with the city. We may wanna have an inlet that connects to the storm sewer system there, so.
All right, so we have a motion by Wickman and a second by Shay to approve and authorize the chairperson to sign the contract with Ralphs Engineering to engineer Annex Parking Lot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion has carried. Thank you for coming in.
Yep, thank you, John.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Right, next we have Discussion and/or Decision on Veterans Affair Commissioner Appointments. We have nothing in our packet. I don't know who's speaking to this.
I can start you on.
Okay.
Um, so the, um, we have three applicants for the Veterans Affair Commission position. Um, and we had your two liaison, which is Jeff and Brian, who conducted the interviews. I fed in on interviews. It was the same interview format that we used last year, the same interview questions as well. Um, the three interviews were conducted and then, um, the two gentlemen can share what their recommendation is.
Here's, we've, we discussed it during the meeting, um, we're looking at continuity for the V A, because in the past, we've had some issues and that's been ironed out. And I believe we'd all like to see the continuity continue. So I'd like to leave the board as is, is what my recommendation was.
You can serve on another term.
Yep.
That's a four-year term.
What was his name, James Murray? Are the, are those four or three-year?
They're three-year, I believe.
Yeah.
Brian, your motion is to appoint, to reappoint David Hazelwood.
Yes, it is.
And then, uh, I'll second that. You, you were, three-year terms, I think, right?
Double check.
Okay.
Say that again?
They're three-year terms, I think, I believe.
I, they're an odd number. Yeah, I believe they're three.
Then, there's there's not any kind of, but you did, you know, it's all state-regulated, uh, that board pretty much, right? So there, there's no, they're not term limited off at all.
I haven't seen anything about term limits, nothing in Iowa code about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Shay and a second by Belt. Additional discussion?
Thanks for serving.
It's not an easy job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Susan, are, are you going to, we need somebody to make contact with them and let them vote them approved. Are you gonna do that? Or do you want Brian or Jeff to do it?
I would expect Brian and Jeff to do that.
I'll do it.
Do we have to swear them in again?
Yes, we do, we should swear them in again, because that's what we've done in the past. Um, I know that David is out of town. That's why we didn't have them come today, um, because we knew that David was out of town. So would you like to swear them in? I can't remember when he comes back.
They're gonna be down there for a little, what was it, two weeks?
I think, I think he was gonna be gone for two weeks, and that was just last week.
Right.
So I don't think we could swear them in on Tuesday. I think it would have to be the Tuesday after.
Two weeks out.
Don't you think? I think so.
They'll be sworn in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. What date is that, Susan? You gotta count for them.
What's that, the twenty-third?
July twenty-third, July twenty-third. Brian, will you let them know that?
I will.
Then, and then will you have to netball that on the agenda? And would you like, need to contact the third candidate, or do you want to?
I could talk to him.
Okay.
I'll talk to all three.
Do you need any, uh, phone numbers from me?
I would, if you'd sent them to me, that'd help me.
Yep.
You're doing that, Brian?
You're welcome.
Yeah, it looks like some of the terms are three years and some of the terms are four years. So for example, Polly Collins is twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-five. Unless that was both of her terms combined. Meg Guton's twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-six.
They're three-year terms.
I think so too.
Yeah, Iowa code, she dictated.
Yeah.
Right, thanks, Jana. Um, next is Levas, Treasurer, Discussion and/or Decision to Approve Potawatomi County Treasurer Semi-Annual Report for January one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. The report is in your packet.
Published, I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Wickman, second by Belt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Right, now we're moving to updates from board members on committee meetings from the past week. Jeff, what would you like to add? Brian?
Okay, I said last week we'd done the V A. And we had some V A interviews, um. See, then there was that Google announcement down at their big plant. It's down at that. And I talked with our water guy. And there was some roads things on Friday that I went out there and worked with them on and that was all fun. I've never seen anybody. Everybody out there knows how to run a road grader. But, but the guy in the road grader, I don't get that. The people will tell you that the road grader don't know what he's doing.
We don't need an engineer, the county's full of them.
Uh, yeah.
I will say one thing, uh, we had a discussion, I think, with, uh, with the, uh, uh, county engineer about, uh, road grader training. Is that what you're talking about?
Right, well.
Okay, and I've always had a complaint from a specific person on Dogwood, out by trainer. Uh, and so I, 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 I asked, uh, uh, the county engineer to, to maybe take that into account. If you're gonna train somebody, trade them out on Dogwood and, and, and they, they can see what the problem was out there. But when I talked to that person in trainer, they said it's all taken care of. He was actually able to catch the road grader while they were out there. And he got the, the dip, the whatever, the issue that they had, all that solved, so I appreciate that, Brian.
Good, good. It's kinda what happened Friday, yeah, so.
Scott, anything you wanna add?
No, just glad, uh, fire works over with for now and hopefully Mother Nature will calm down.
Yes.
Trees and branches and some of that.
Tim, anything to add? Um, I have, I need somebody's help um, with the C O two pipeline announcement and the Iowa Utilities Commission accepting or proceeding with the eminent domain. Um, I think we need to look at our Compensation Condemnation Commission. I think we're supposed to review those members annually, and we have twenty-eight representatives from the seven dif- or four different fields. And I just need somebody's help to contact those individuals to make sure that they're willing to serve another year because they could actually be called into action um, for the C O two and for the people that have not signed the land easements. And we can have more than twenty-eight on this list, as long as we have equal representation from the four groups. And that's agricultural, landowners, business person, city property owner, and realtors. So that's.
I think we went over that last.
Year.
We do.
Last year and year before, we called a bunch of them.
Yep, and we do it annually, and last year we did use them, and I just wanna make sure that with this awareness of the C O two pipelines that we're adding additional people and.
They were called, uh, to do some connotations?
Yes, down on Dogwood, the road that we were paving.
Oh, yeah, that was, that was, that would have been Dogwood that we were paving.
Okay, well, it was down in that area. Aspen or?
Okay.
Aspen's on the south side.
Hundred and fortieth, okay.
There was. Ground prices where they had to condemn a couple of things.
Okay.
Yep.
Just little pieces.
So who wants to help me make these phone calls?
Uh, Jeanette?
Jeanette made them all.
Who wants to help me make these phone calls?
I, I will, if you give me a call, I'll sit down and make a few calls for you.
I'd like to add a few names to the list, so I will.
I mean, if you need more else, I'll, I'll.
Doug, you wanna be added?
Might as well.
Make phone calls just to remind folks?
No, 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 no. Be added to the Compensation Condemnation Commission that, that could participate should we need eminent domain proceedings.
Does the judge pick those from that list?
Might as well.
Yes.
You're here anyway.
The meetings are here?
No.
No, it's just you gotta call them and ask them if they'll serve in case. Put them on notice, you know, are you gonna serve for the next? put them on notice, you know, are you gonna serve for the next year?
I think, I think. I think they normally meet down at the jail.
Right, sheriff's office.
Sheriff's office, I mean.
They need some help on the phone.
No, no, no. I can do the phone calls.
People, people do serve, they, they pick probably one from each.
You have one of them that serves.
Well, only if you're called.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
The two, I, I think, don't, don't the two, um, entities, which I assume it's the county attorney's office and then the other person's representative attorney pick?
You need the judgment.
On the person.
On the which, I mean, the permission first.
Okay.
But I know that this last time we did it, they had to call the whole list, cause there are a bunch of people not available. And you have to have equal representation of different groups.
Yeah.
Having a, a larger is helpful.
Right. And you know, that had to stay, uh, if you add one in one category, you have to add them in. This is the first time I.
Keep it balanced.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I read Iowa code six point five A and B this morning and I still don't understand how the Iowa Utilities Commission was granted that authority because it just does not fit this project.
This is still, there's gonna be appeal on several fronts.
It'll go to the spring court. I was talking with, uh, Representative Schultz. There's another guy out there to vote, I can't, I can't see his face, can't.
Best, best, best is the.
Yeah.
He's the representative.
And they both said they just can't get enough people to vote the right way and they, uh, it'll go to the spring court, they believe.
Yeah, they've got lots of bases for it.
Hey, and the answer is, they am a stipend every year. It'll, it'll put people over the edge and they'll go with it. Run to you and then pay taxes on it and then give up your. I don't get it.
So does.
If there's that huge a money in it, share the wealth. It'll be done.
So did anyone sign up for public comments? Alright.
You'll be commenting now, won't you, Doug? Why'd you get me on this?
I'll move to the chair. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.